Good evening all, welcome. We are now in session. Call to order. Today's invocation will be by Reverend Mark Wilkinson, rector of St. Adrian's Episcopal Church. Welcome.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, creator of all that is, we pray this night that you send down your spirit upon those who govern and hold office in the city of Virginia Beach. We give thanks for all the faithful servants on this council and all who labor daily for our city, especially our first responders and all those who go out at all times of day and night in all kinds of elements, no matter what, to ensure our health and safety. We also pray for those who quietly do their jobs in the background that allows our city to function. Bless the deliberations of this council and those who appear before them with your wisdom. Help them remember to act in a spirit of loving their neighbors as ourselves and knowing that we all desire what is best for our city. Grant to all gathered here today a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose of all may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all the people of Virginia Beach in our region. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we, roll call?
Yes, all present excluding Ms. Kane, who's sick.
Okay, mention Shannon Kane, councilwoman, is not with us tonight. She is feeling ill. May we lift her in prayer. Okay, can we have the roll call, please? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then can we have a motion for certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you certify the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, can we have certification of the informal, formal, and informal sessions of January fifteenth, 2019? Do I have a second?
Second.
Votes open.
By a vote of nine to zero, Mr. Moss abstaining, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Yes.
I'm abstaining because I was out with pneumonia and I missed the meeting on the nineteenth.
All right, at this point is my privilege to do a couple of resolutions. As you know, this is African-American Heritage Month, and there are many fine organizations that participate in bringing forward, you know, the mission of equality in this country. And I'd like to, we honor two different organizations right now, but we have, the wording of the resolutions are the same. Whereas people of African descent first arrived in Virginia four hundred years ago, and whereas the first persons of African descent in Virginia Beach were likely to have three individuals transported here by Captain Adam Thoroughgood by sixteen thirty-seven, and whereas the general commemoration of the historical contributions of African-Americans in Virginia and elsewhere was first established as Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six by a native Virginian, Carter G. Woodson. And whereas President General R. Ford expanded this commemoration and celebration to encompass Black History Month in nineteen seventy-six. And since, whereas since nineteen seventy-six, the President of the United States has issued annual proclamation for National African-American History Month. Whereas the theme of commemoration in twenty nineteen is black migrations. And whereas the C-TAC area in Virginia Beach is one of the oldest free African-American communities in the United States. And whereas several government farms were established in Princess Anne County by the Union Army during the Civil War to house and provide work for a growing number of African-Americans escaping slavery. Whereas numerous African-American communities and settlements were established in the nineteenth century in what is now Virginia Beach, including Beechwood, Blackwater, Burton Station, Sernville, Creed's, Great Neck, Mill Dam, Little Neck, New Light, Newsome Farm, Pleasant Ridge, and Punggoh. And whereas numerous African-American communities and neighborhoods were established in the twentieth century in what is now Virginia Beach, including Atlantic Park, Doyletown, Grace Town, Lake Edward, Lake Smith, L-N-J Gardens, Queen City, and Reed Town. And whereas African-Americans have overcome enslavement, discrimination, and adversity to make positive contribution in all areas of expertise and service in Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America. The mayor of the city council support the establishment of an African-American Cultural Center in Virginia Beach as a hub for African-American culture and history, and have approved the deed and transfer and title of property in Virginia Beach for this purpose. Now, I, therefore, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim February twenty nineteen African-American Heritage Month in Virginia Beach, and furthermore, call on all the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of African-Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. I welcome. Could I have Elizabeth Miller and Tammy Rice from C-TAC come forward, please? Please come forward. And thank you for your most valuable contributions to our city and your part of our city, C-TAC. Your contributions are welcome, and thank you for what you're going to continue to do. God bless you. Thank you. And next, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, please come forward. Founder and executive of project management of the African-American Cultural Center. Please come forward and receive your well-deserved recognition. Thank you. Now, one of the neat things about being mayor is reading proclamations. And now we have proclamation. Whereas in two thousand and one, in their first season of Pop Warner Football, the Virginia Beach Mustangs won the Division One Junior Midget Pop Warner Super Bowl, completing a fourteen-and-oh season in which they recorded nine shutouts. Way to go. Whereas on December eighth, twenty eighteen, the Virginia Beach Mustangs, led by head coach Bruce Pearl, once again won the Division One Junior Pee-wee Pop Warner Super Bowl by shutting out the Saint Philip Saints twenty-four-nothing to compete another undefeated season. One of the oldest football organizations in the country, Pop Warner holds its national championships at Walt Disney World and has working relationships with the National Football League and numerous corporate giants. Whereas Virginia Beach Mustangs organization is composed of eight football teams and a hundred and eighty-one youth athletes between the ages of five and fourteen. Whereas ninety-nine percent of these children are Virginia Beach residents. Whereas the organization was founded in two thousand and one by Sid Pearl, who has coached in Virginia Beach for fifty-two years since the inception of the Virginia Beach Mustangs, over one hundred athletes have earned the honor as All-American Scholars. Whereas outside of football in the private sector, government sector, and military, the Virginia Beach Mustangs include alumni, include former NFL players Percy Harmon and Scott McGee, Bubba Jenkins, NCA Division One Wrestling Champs Eli Harold from the Detroit Lions, Justin Hunter from the Pittsburgh Steelers, Taj Boyd formerly of the New York Jets and Pittsburgh Steelers, Bucky Hodges from the Pittsburgh Steelers, numerous college football players, and numerous former Virginia Beach Mustang players have found success. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the city of Beach, do hereby proclaim February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, Virginia Beach Mustangs Day. Sid, can you come up, please? Okay, and boys, come on, bring up the teams. Yeah. My friends, the future leaders of Virginia Beach and our country. Congratulations, we're going to give you these pins. Okay? Here you go. Here we go. We got a bunch of folks here.
Mayor, we go, do we have a bunch?
Yes, Aaron.
City coaches, I just want to say, you guys are doing great work with these young men. And as a former football player myself of the Cook Redskins back in the day, I can't tell you how instrumental and how invaluable you are to these young men's lives and the things that you're doing, so my hat's off to you as well and to you young men over there. Football is not forever. Education, stay in them books, that's important. Their talent shows in that classroom where it allows you to show your ability on the field. Again, congratulations and well done.
Thank you. And special thanks to the coaches who devote so much time and energy, but also to the parents who are in the background and very much a part of the team. Thank you and continue success. Everybody get a pin? Here we go. Okay, thank you all very much. I tell you, it's an honor to be able to give proclamations to a great group of people tonight. Thank you all, and thank you all very much. Okay, we're going to open a public hearing first on the conveyance of city property, the Housing Resource Center, and the Virginia Beach Development Authority administering grant funds.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Number two, conveyance of easements over city property. Fifty-seven oh nine Providence Road, known as Woodstock Park, to Hampton Road Sanitation District.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Okay, number three, sale of easements over city property, interfacility traffic area. Thirty-three twenty North Landing Road, twenty-six sixty-eight Indian River Road, twenty-five fourteen Salem Road.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay, I will close the public hearings and, ready for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda the following items. Under ordinances resolution, item J. one, ordinance to authorize a transfer of property located at one zero four North Witch Duck Road, Housing Resource Center of Virginia Beach Development Authority regarding administering grant funds noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. Item J. two, ordinance to authorize utility and access easements over a portion of city property located at five seven zero nine Providence Road to the Hampton Road Sanitation District and declare such easements to be in excess of the city's needs. Item J. three, ordinance to declare excess restrictive easements over city property in the interfacility traffic area and authorize the city manager to sell the same to the United States of America, A. thirty-three twenty North Landing Road, B. twenty-eight sixty-eight Indian River Road, C. twenty-five fourteen Salem Road. Item J. five, resolution to provide for the issuance and sale of stormwater utility revenue bonds, Series two zero one nine, in a maximum principal amount of thirty-five million dollars, provide for the form details and the payments thereof to finance the cost of improvements to the stormwater utility system and authorize the execution and delivery of document related to such financing. Item J. six, ordinance regarding Woodstock Park HRSD cost contribution. A. establish CIP Project four dash zero four nine and transfer two million dollars from open space and park infrastructure development and maintenance to. B. authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Hampton Roads Sanitation District, Ray, city-related improvements to Woodstock Park. Item seven, ordinance to accept and appropriate, A. one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars from closed and inactive capital projects from the Virginia Beach Development Authority to the Virginia Beach Amphitheater Capital Maintenance regarding expansion of parking lot noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. Item B. twenty thousand to the FY twenty eighteen nineteen Parks and Recreation Operating Budget regarding summer youth employment. Seven C. ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars from the estate of Irene Brandon Roper to the FY eighteen nineteen Fire Department Operating Budget regarding purchase of thermal imaging cameras. Item seven D. fifty thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, V-DAM, to the FY eighteen nineteen Fire Department Operating Budget regarding purchase, supplies, and training for the technical rescue team. Seven E. four hundred and forty, four hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars from V-DOT to CIP two dash one one one, traffic safety improvements for Ray Design Construct the Pacific Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project. Item eight, A. six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the Fire Department Gift Fund regarding purchase of grill for Station Four. Item eight B. six thousand dollars in interest income to the FY twenty eighteen nineteen Fire Department Operating Budget regarding purchase of a utility vehicle. Item nine, ordinance to transfer, A. two hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars within the FY eighteen nineteen Waste Management Operating Budget regarding support recycling services. Nine B. one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and one dollars from Reserve for Contingencies to the FY eighteen nineteen Housing and Neighbor Preservation Operating Budget regarding enforcement efforts and code compliance measures. Nine C. one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars from Reserve for Contingencies to the FY eighteen nineteen Office of Voter Registration and Elections Operating Budget regarding recount completed in December twenty eighteen.
I open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item K. one, Glenn McDermott Town Center Jewel LLC for special exception for alternative compliance to the city zoning ordinance regarding a freestanding sign at four four five two Virginia Beach Boulevard, District Five, Lynn Haven, noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. Item K. two, Clear Creek Holdings LLC for conditional change of zoning from R-ten residential and I-one light industrial to conditional I-1 light industrial to vacant parcel off of South Burnetec Road, approximately six hundred and eighty feet from Carissa Court regarding constructing three buildings for industrial office warehouse units District Six Beach, and that's consent for deferral to February nineteenth. Item K. three, LBH LLC for conditional change of zoning from R. seven point five residential to conditional A twenty-four apartment at four sixty-three North Witch Duck Road and the two vacant parcels to the south regarding developing twenty-eight dwelling units District Four Bayside noting that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item K. four, Richard C. Trotman and Seven Cities Tattoo LLC at five two nine six, five two nine eight, five three zero zero, five three zero two, five three zero four, five three zero six, five three zero eight, five three one zero, five three one two, five three one four, five three one six, and five three one eight Providence Road in the Kempsville District for, A. conditional change of zoning from B-one neighbor business to conditional B-two community business, B. variance to Section four point four, Paragraph B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width, C. conditional use permit regarding tattoo parlor. Item K. five, Atlantic Auto Works Limited and John and Betty Willis Revocable Living Trust for conditional use permit regarding automobile repair garage at five four seven nine Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Kempsville District. Item six, Iron Asylum Two LLC in Virginia Kempsville LLC for conditional use permit regarding indoor and outdoor recreation facility at one eight three two Kempsville Road, Suite thirteen in the Centerville District. Item seven, Jarmin and La Crea Westmoreland for a conditional use permit regarding a family daycare home at four eight five seven South Oliver Drive in the Bayside District. Item eight, ordinance to amend Section one point three of the floodplain ordinance regarding definition of repetitive loss. Item nine, ordinance to amend Section two zero one of the city zoning ordinance regarding permits for fences noting that Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott are vote, both voting no. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Great job, Mr. Ward. Okay, any discussion?
I'll wait till the votes close and I'll make my comments.
Okay, the vote is open.
Mr. Ross, may I have your? Thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by the vice mayor noting Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott's nay votes.
Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to explain to the listening and the public that's here why my no votes relative to the transfer of property for the resource, Housing Resource Center that's on Witch Duck Road. While we do have the ability to recover the property at our will back to the Development Authority, I think there are other organizations in the city nonprofit that are better aligned with the mission and for which I have more trust and faith in to execute the public's interest. With regards to the number of the items that were on moving money, one of the things that we do, which I think is not the best, is rather than comprehensively knowing where all our excess revenues are, what means where people are under-executing by departments, and comprehensively looking at all the capital that's available, and then looking at all the needs, what we do is these, all these little one-of-ones, you know, we move this to here, move that to there, so we never have a comprehensive look. And there are other needs that might have a higher priority than the things that we're funding, but we don't see those. And I just think this is a poor way to conduct business, so I'm voting no on principle. On planning, the special exemption, the Planning Commission voted to deny the sign at that location right near Princeton High School before, the Diamond Directs, you probably all know where that is, near Town Center, and I just thought their rationale was better than the rationale I heard to approve it, so I'm supporting the Planning Commission. With regards to the apartments on Witch Duck Road, this is a case where they're asking for a higher density, A twenty-four, to get eighteen because of lot coverage, and they couldn't meet the lot coverage, that was the discussion we had two weeks ago, so to meet it, they reduced parking to the minimum. I know many of you go out the city and see apartment complexes, and do you ever know any that have too much parking? No. So I think we're just creating a future problem down the road, so I voted no, and I thought the reasoning of how they approached it. And on the fence issue, I just think we have enough regulations, and maybe we need to consider that every time we adopt something new, maybe we should be thinking of something we have we can get rid of, because I just think sometimes we over-regulate the use of private property, so I voted no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay. Okay, we are now going to go on to a couple items on the agenda for hearing. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, telephone number to the clerk of the, of the court, of the council here, okay? I guess the first item we're going to be bringing forward, ordinances, RE Cavalier Shores Neighborhood, to amend city code sections twenty-one three five three and twenty-one three five four, Ray Residential Parking Program deferred from November twentieth, and B. to implement a pilot program by amending city code sections twenty-one three five three and twenty-one three five four Ray Residential Permit Parking. We are ready?
The first speaker is Bernice Pope. And after Ms. Pope will be Steve Burwell.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, council members, and staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunities to speak to you tonight. I have been trying to come up today with words to say that would be different from the ones I've already said to you in previous council meetings about parching, parking issues we have in Cavalier Shores. Then I read today the Facebook message that Councilman David Nygaard posted this afternoon. His message was clear. Oh, can you hear? Okay. His message was clear to me that my message was exactly the same as his, short and simple. Councilman Nygaard's message was, what is on the agenda is a pilot program, a pilot program approved by staff. Quote from his Facebook page, "There is no doubt in my mind that the parking issues faced by residents of Cavalier Shores Neighborhood are a direct result of council's actions approving the construction projects and developments adjacent to their neighborhood." I'm quoting what Councilman Nygaard said today. I totally agree with that. When we came to you five years ago, we were concerned about the negative impact the Cavalier Complex would have on our neighborhood, and you all assured us that you would help if we had any problems. Staff last year conducted a parking study, and it provided information they needed and agreed that we needed a solution now. They suggested, in lieu of an RPP program, which is, this is not anything to be confused with an RPP program, this is a pilot parking construction program, totally separate from the RPP. That is what's on the agenda tonight. We have several neighbors here tonight to support the pilot program suggested that limited parking in our neighborhood for a maximum of three hours, twenty-four-seven, for three years, which is the expected duration of the construction of the Cavalier Complex on the oceanfront. Several neighbors have, could not be here tonight, have also mailed you in support of the pilot program.
Bernice, thank you.
Can everybody stand up? We've got a lot of people who are not speaking that were here from Cavalier Shores, just to let you know how many people.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you speaking for the Civic League?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a planning item.
Well, it's on, it's ordinance, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernice.
Steve Burwell?
Good evening, I'm Steve Burwell, treasurer of our Civic League. I wanted to provide a bit of history of this, Bernice covered some of it, but I think it's pretty intriguing, at least to us, hopefully for y'all. Our neighborhood concerns over the Cavalier project started when we heard that the transaction was going to take place, and we organized a civic league to protect ourselves, no offense. In December of two thousand and thirteen, we came before you folks when y'all were getting ready to vote on the original plan for the Cavalier. We said to you, we have a lot of problems with the number of parking spots in the complex, and we were worried about traffic safety. We were trod by you folks at the project meet code. City council told us that if we had any issues, come back. You're here for us, and you will make it right. As construction activity accelerated in two thousand and sixteen, we began looking for ways to deal with the evolving neighborhood issues. We were told the city RPP program was available to us at any time. We studied it and realized it's not helpful because it allows unfettered parking by employees and others at any time, and that wouldn't work. In January two thousand and seventeen, we met with, with Councilman Lewis Jones and James, Jim Wood, along with a number of city staff. It was an outstanding meeting. The collective group came up with a suggested solution to our unsafe street traffic. We were told at that point if we wanted a parking solution other than the existing RPP, we would have to get twenty, or seventy-five percent approval of all of our neighbors, and then, once they approved that, come back to city council and also get approval. During two thousand and seventeen, we obtained well over seventy-five percent approval of our, of our neighbors for the aner refined RPP program, which at the time we thought we needed. In late two thousand and seventeen, we came, we began In late two thousand seventeen, we came, we again came to the city council, and you folks suggested to us that we defer folk, I'm sorry, defer the vote on that, that RPP program until November of two thousand eighteen. You also asked city staff to undertake a parking program, once the Cavalier project was fully online and totally ginning the business, so to speak. So, at that point, city staff undertook the count, and in the summer and fall of two thousand eighteen, they counted cars in Cavalier Shores. And they also determined, or got an understanding of both on-street and off-street parking.
Thank you very much, sir.
Am I done?
Yep. The red light is going, sorry.
I haven't even made my point.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Okay, question for Mr.
Since you're the treasurer, how many members do you have in the Cavalier Civic League?
Well, our, our neighborhood, one hundred and twenty-three homes, and, but that doesn't include other folks that, that live there and rental properties or otherwise. The only point I'll make, and then I'm, I'm sorry, unfortunately, this, the Cavalier parking situation has and will continue to limit beach parking in our neighborhood. There's nowhere for anybody to park, including us and beachgoers, for an extended period of time, so the unintended consequences are not.
I have one last question, if I could. This is a district number and not expecting expansion. Do you happen to know, of the residents within the neighborhood, how many resident vehicles that are in that district?
I, I do not.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's, it's too many for the parking spot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michael Legilia, and then Don Monto, Monto.
Michael Legilia.
Okay.
I'm just a resident, I live on the corner of Holly Road and Cavalier Drive, right there at ground zero. We have people parking from the new eighty homes that you guys allowed them to put them across the street, they're on twenty-foot rightaways, the, the house right across the street from me, it's a million-dollar house, it's on a twenty-nine-hundred-square-foot lot, these guys got two parking spaces. He's always got two cars in front of my house. There's no way that I can fight these guys. And then you've got the construction workers. I need relief, there's something that's got to happen, and we don't need to defer this for a couple of years or anything else. We're really in a, in a, in a situation down there that we really need to address, and, please, give us this program, don't, don't give us, you know, don't give us a lot of smoke and mirrors. We need to get a decent program that we can, that we can work with.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Don Monto, and then Ginger Caps.
Hey, good evening. I'm a photographer, so I brought some chill intel tonight. This is what you voted for five years ago. This is our problem. If you take a look at this photograph that I took this morning, look at the street. In this entire neighborhood at Cavalier Residence, there are no cars on the street. There are no cars on the street. The reason why there are no cars is there's no parking allowed anywhere in Cavalier Residence. There are fifty no-parking signs in this neighborhood, fifty, I counted them this morning. This is a photograph I took this morning of Holly Road, Forty-fourth Street at Myrtle, Forty-fourth Street to Holly Road. There are forty-three cars parked on the street this morning. Thirty-nine of them left at three-thirty. Here is Forty-third Street this morning at seven o'clock. There are thirty-nine cars parked on our street. My house is right there, I didn't have a parking spot this morning. There were seven cars on the street at four o'clock. These gentlemen and ladies that work on the construction zone at the hotel come at five to five-thirty en masse, and they park all over the neighborhood, they block the intersections, they park right up to the stop sign, they park on the sidewalks, they block the sidewalks, there is nowhere for anyone to park in our neighborhood. And most of these homes are, are, have cottages in the back that they don't even have parking. My neighbor across the street has to put a cone out, because if she doesn't do that, there is literally nowhere for her to park, nowhere. She doesn't have parking in the alley, so we need help, and we need help now, because this is serious. And the city manager was quoted in the pilot yesterday as saying he was concerned about beachgoers not having a parking space. And I say, "I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, I paid ten thousand dollars for taxes, and I don't have a place to park in front of my house, and you're saying you're worried about beachgoers?" Well, I'm telling you, beachgoers aren't going to have a place to park this summer because the construction workers are going to grab them at five o'clock, and there'll be nowhere for anyone to park, so we need, we need help. Please help as I say ditto to what Bernice said and to what Councilman Nygaard said, and please give us the relief that we need before we go crazy. Thanks so much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Ginger, Ginger Caps, and after Ms. Caps will be BJ Baumann.
Welcome.
Hi there, good evening, everyone. Councilman Rouse, you said that you were a Cook Redskin, phenomenal organization, both my boys were Cook Seminoles, one-year back-to-back city championships, one-twenty-five A, and my little guy, thirteen, champions also. Okay, um, my name is Ginger Caps, I have been a member of the RAC Subcommittee, the TPPC, since two thousand fourteen, and before that, I was a member of the RAPC, Resort Area Parking Committee, formed in two thousand twelve. I am also a resident of the three-hundred block on Sixteenth Street. Councilman Nygaard attended our TPPC meeting last week, that is Traffic Parking and Pedestrian. This was the first time our committee had been made aware of this new three-hour timeframe proposal deviating from standard RPPP uniformity. Councilman Nygaard, at that point, I believe we were looking at a thirty-day-only deferral to allow TPPC and RAC to vet this new proposal as thoroughly as possible. To be clear, Councilman Nygaard's new proposal, I know it's not coming up tonight, the TCP3, has not been introduced to TP, to TPPC or RAC for vetting. We look forward to that coming through council and working its way through the process. Should you move forward without deferring, you will be circumventing a process that is the very reason RAC and all of her subcommittees exist. VBCC created RAC and her subcommittees years ago as a body to be relied on for guidance for major agenda items such as this. You will be discrediting and invalidating years of work, research, and knowledge on the RPPP that these committees bring to the table. Proven time and time again, these processes work. The RPPP was created in nineteen eighty-nine by Virginia Beach City Council in order to protect our oceanfront neighborhoods from crime, not to provide convenient on-street parking for residents in front of our homes. Remember, I am also a resident, okay, so I get it, I am already in the RPPP. Cavalier Shores residents lament that some of their homes lack driveways, so do homes scattered throughout the already-existing RPP neighborhoods. Our concerns are identical, these inconveniences exist throughout the already RPPP neighborhoods. Please consider us as well, if you do for one, please do for all, and allow the process of our committee's work before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yeah, question.
Mrs. Caps, is it your, your opposition is to the RPP being modified, or is your opposition to Cavalier Shores having relief?
My opposition is to not going through the process and these things being thoroughly vetted. We came to you, our committees, both TPPC, and we did ask that you give us a thirty-day deferral so that we could thoroughly vet this, because I understand beachgoers want to come to the beach and enjoy, and these are still public streets, I have them in front of my home all the time, they pay taxes as well, they vote, so, come on, I mean, we're all a city here, and we want to be inclusive, everybody in the city has rights, that's a public street. I can't just go out and be like, "Excuse me, I live at the oceanfront, my home taxes may be more than yours, so you can't park in front of my home." That's not how it works.
And is the RPP working for your neighborhood?
With the regular timeframe, it does.
Okay.
We're going to have construction coming through with Dome, with other possible big projects, so we're going to have some concerns too. However, should you do for this neighborhood moving forward with a three-hour timeframe rollover, you may want to consider that for other areas. If you do for one, you do for all. I have neighbors that have been asking for some of these very same things that Cavalier Shore wants for years, and when coming forward, we've always been told no. So, I don't understand why perhaps some neighborhoods are considered more special than others. Thank you.
I have one question. In regard to your statements made reference to the RAC and their position and processes, was your statement voted on by the RAC membership, or is that your personal opinion of the RAC's position?
That is not my personal position, I have spoken with several members of RAC.
Did the RAC formally vote on your statement?
Sir, our last time that we had, one moment, if I may.
No, you may not, I'm done.
Excuse me, Mayor Dyer, may I, please?
I asked the question, she did not answer it with a declarative answer.
I've not had an opportunity, the RAC, as well as TPPC, we've not had the opportunity to weigh in on these new changes as we just got them.
Maybe I can answer that.
The formal position of RAC and TPPC still stands from twenty-seventeen.
The RAC is not evaluated.
The RAC is not evaluated.
We've not had the opportunity to.
Okay, thank you.
Please respect the process, thank you.
The next speaker is BJ Baumann.
Welcome.
I understand.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor, city staff, everybody up here. I'm BJ Baumann, I'm the chairperson of RAC, okay? And on September seventh, two thousand and seventeen, we did take a formal vote on the request at Cavalier Shores at that point in time for an exemption. Since that time, we have not heard anything up until last week, when we got a understanding that this was going to be coming forward at this week's council session. We are tremendously sensitive to what's going on in Cavalier Shores. I'm not the enemy to Cavalier Shores, I'm trying to come up with solutions that will help them as well. We're appreciative that they have undergone some really outside factors that are negative at this point, but we're also very concerned about the precedent that's being set by setting up an exemption in this area. Ultimately, it could be costly, it could be prohibitive for new development in this area. RAC representatives have met with representatives of Cavalier Shores as recently as this weekend. We expressed a desire at that point in time for a thirty-day deferral so that we could work with city staff, that's both RAC and the TPBC Subcommittee, so that we could work with city staff and all other involved partners in trying to come up with alternative locations for the workers to park. There are already discussions undergoing several areas that could be potentially used to put those workers and pull them out of the neighborhood. Additionally, we have a concern with the local residents, and I'm, I'm more concerned about the perception there than I am about the reality. We have an issue with a lot of our residents throughout Virginia Beach not feeling like they're welcome at the beach, and I think that this would further that perception being negative, and we really are working diligently to turn that around. We want it to be considered everybody's beach in Virginia Beach, not just the people that live down at the resort. Parking throughout our city, and most especially our resort, is a vital issue that requires a thoughtful and most important comprehensive plan. Respectfully, RAC and its Transportation, Pedestrian, and Parking Committee request that thirty-day referral so that we can work on parking alternatives. At the end of that, we may come back and say, "Sorry, we, we couldn't come up with anything, you need to create this special district." But I'm hopeful that we can come up with something.
Thank you, BJ.
Oh my God, I can't believe I used all my time, thank you guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Um, I'd like to, I think I'd like to go ahead and start with my substitute motion, but I think I need a supermajority, is that correct?
Yeah.
What's your motion?
The ordinance, the ordinance in place of the existing, what's change?
What was the mo?
Oh, it's the ordinance that we passed out earlier.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, question.
This is for the city attorney, parliamentary question, since there isn't a motion made, I don't know how you can introduce a resolution that was never advertised available to the public, because it would then take a supermajority vote to add it to the agenda, I do believe, because now it's a primary motion and it was not on the agenda.
The question is one for the chair, do you want to accept the ordinance as a substitute to something that's on the agenda, or do you want to treat it as a new and distinct item? It has not been on, it has not been advertised, it has not been out there for the public to see, but I do believe there's precedent for, for doing that in the past. I do believe that you'd probably be better served to at least, if you're going to add it, do it by the supermajority requirement in the, in two-dash, I think it's fifty-five of the code. So, I, I would, if, if Mr. Nygaard wants council to consider it, I would suggest that it would be a motion, the first thing he would do would be make a motion to add this as the third item under four for consideration, and then you would need a second, and then you would need, I believe, eight affirmative votes to add it.
I guess my only concern, oh, I'm sorry, Jess.
I just wanted a point of clarification, are we, because we got, during the council comment, we got an alternative ordinance which created a parking permit program, and then, I guess, this second document you provided us would then enter Cavalier Shores into this program.
Yes, it would, yes, it would.
Okay, I, I wanted to understand what you're.
And my intent is to try to find resolution for Cavalier Shores today without affecting or modifying or changing the RPP. The RPP, in my opinion, is the wrong tool in this situation. I think that we should have an ordinance that addresses construction in every neighborhood in Virginia Beach, not just one select, and, you know, sometimes when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. I think the RPP is the wrong tool in this, and I think that creating a new ordinance that would specifically identify any neighborhood in Virginia Beach as being, having undue burden from parking related to construction, I think that would be the better approach. And then Cavalier Shores would, would fall under that, that type of category because of the construction that they've, they've endured for a number of years. So my, my hope is that we could actually address Cavalier Shores today and not defer it, but if we have to defer it and have this approach in the future, then so be it, but I would, I would just ask the council that we could address it tonight, if possible.
Mr. Ward.
Thanks. I, I appreciate what Mr. Nygaard has done here with the alternative ordinance and the resolution to designate it, I kind of agree with what Mr. Moss is saying with, with respect to this, and, and because this actually creates four pages of, of new law, I think it's best that, that this is something that's vetted prior to, to bringing it forward. I mean, conceptually, I think it's a great idea, but I think the devil's in the details, frankly, and I'll give you an example, when NexCom was being built, up, up on Virginia Beach Boulevard, completely out of the RPP area and not eligible for RPP, I had, in my district, I had a lot of people who lived back in that neighborhood who were very upset for similar reasons, they could not get, get up and down their roads because there was not sufficient parking there, so perhaps this could have, could have assisted with that. Now, that was a major project, a major federal project, but it's, so that's, so, you know, my suggestion is, is, I, I think this, this is certainly worthy of discussion. I, I would also say to, to what Ms. Caps and Ms. Baumann said, they would be the third and fourth members of the, the RAC that I've heard from on this, so I know the RAC's engaged in this, and, and I think they, they certainly, their, their parking group certainly needs to, needs to take a look at this, because this does have implications, so, so my suggestions would, would not be to add it to the, to the agenda, but, but to consider it separately at, at a later date. at a later date as part of a deferral, or however you wish to handle this item.
Rose, ma'am.
And I appreciate you doing this out-of-the-box thinking and trying to look at this holistically, but because it's a pretty extensive change that, we as councilmembers, at least I haven't had really enough time to digest it, and I think it needs to be vetted by the public because it's not just Cavalier Shores, it's citywide, and for, you know, other groups to at least look at it, to sort of follow our process.
That's fine.
And so I respectfully like if you just withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw the motion for the ordinance and ask for a deferral. I'd like to ask for a deferral for two weeks.
On Cavalier Shores?
On the Cavalier-- yeah, on Cavalier Shores. And then include that with, include the new ordinance with that. Is that the--
Grab a motion.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, is that a motion to defer both items 4A and 4B, or are you taking 4A off the table and only considering the pilot program?
That's Mr. Nygaard.
I would like to go ahead and consider 4A, 4B, and then add to that, I guess, 4C. Can we defer both?
So then, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, when are the next two voting meetings?
The next meeting's February 19th.
And then after that?
Sorry. It'll be March the 5th.
Okay.
So if we follow the process of having a briefing--
We want to do 30 days.
And hearing, that would give you the 30 days.
I'll accept the 30-day-- I guess it's an amendment. Sure. I'll accept 30 days.
Second.
Okay. Could we ask BJ Bowman to come back up, please? You know, just for clarification.
February 19th.
Can I ask a question before, just about the motion while she's coming up?
Okay.
Because the two things that we talked about, they're not part of the motion, so we're really just deferring A and B, because that means everything can come back for consideration.
Yeah, this one isn't on the agenda.
Oh, I know. Just clarifying to make sure that what I heard is what was--
No, yeah, that's correct.
I was just ensuring that both 4A and 4B were encompassed within the motion so that you didn't have an unresolved issue.
I'm with you, Mr. Spiles.
So I have a question, Ms. Bowman. So this, so 30 days would give your group sufficient time to at least review this and take a look at--
Well, we originally requested 60, but obviously--
30 works, right?
--we backed off of that 30 works.
Okay, because we want to get this--
Yeah, no, I want to, I want to-- you guys have really confused a lot of things here, because I printed off the ordinance as well. Here, you had two different ordinances, and I want to make sure I'm agreeing to the right thing here. On the back of one, you have a policy proposal, which is the new program that would be citywide, okay?
That's just an option. We're not--
Right, okay. That needs to be vetted on a whole different thing.
Correct.
We're just talking about the Cavalier-- perfect and yes, sir, 30 days.
I'm gonna give you a copy of this.
Thank you.
What I thought we were doing, I might be wrong, is that-- because I'm certainly not embracing the alternative, just so you know. I'm just, no one would be surprised for me to say that. But that both, there are, the end, any option, something other than what may come from the RAC or from the group, the council always reserves the right to have their own thing, and that there's a full spectrum of things that may be considered by us on the 19th, of which these two options are just on that spectrum of possibilities.
Right, and I know that the document that is on the back of this, that's way beyond the resort. I mean, RAC would certainly want to weigh in on it, but we're one of about 9,000 people that I think would want to weigh in on that.
And the other thing is, we have a retreat coming up next week, and this could, you know, be a point of discussion, you know, going forward, where we can really sit down and vet some of this stuff out.
Is this one of those issues that we might want to hear from the public at one meeting and vote at another?
Yes, that's exactly what we're--
So maybe in two weeks, we might want to just have an opportunity for people to talk, and then we can vote on the fourth.
And that's why we're going to do a 30-day deferral.
Public hearing on the 19th.
Yeah, we'll have a public hearing on the 19th, and--
On the 19th.
You can do all that. Your miracle.
Yeah.
You know what? I'm going to try.
Okay.
How's that? We know you're Superwoman.
Yeah, I've got my cape in my purse.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are all of these options going to be available?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, yes.
For discussion on the 19th?
Yes.
And maybe some others, who knows?
All including--
For clarity, we're going to implement a whole new set of laws for construction workers, parking, and a neighborhood associated with the Cavalier.
No.
No. No, basically, we're--
We're deferring the whole--
Yeah, we're deferring for now for further discussion.
I get we're going to defer, but my, I guess my understanding is that to alleviate parking in Cavalier Shores, we're going to determine whether or not it should be a subject to the RPP and implement a whole new set of guidelines.
Or a separate ordinance.
Or a separate thing altogether.
There's been widespread discussion that we don't want to modify the RPP.
For the single cause of a development that was approved by council.
Yeah, that's correct.
Not necessarily.
No.
No. I think that's why you were looking at perhaps doing something that was broader.
The--
Yeah.
Yeah. No, the ordinance, the ordinance that I'm proposing would be available to all neighborhoods. It's not special north-end neighborhoods, but we can talk out.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Okay, just so I can clarify, because people are talking around it. Hey, Mr. Nygaard, just confirm with me and Madam Clerk what we've discussed. Your motion is a deferral for items 4A and 4B--
4A and 4B.
--until March the 5th.
March the 5th.
March the 5th. The other two items, the resolution in this, are not on the agenda.
Correct.
They can be added to a future agenda, but they will be part of-- they could be added to the agenda for that purpose.
Yeah.
Mr. Ross talked about the RPP program. The RPP is available now administratively to the folks in Cavalier Shores, but as the speaker--
They're asking.
They did not think that that would work for them, and they're looking for modification. That's kind of why we're here. So just to clarify that--
That's correct.
Yeah.
4A, 4B deferred.
This could be on a future agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, this is just to allow, and believe me, I am very sympathetic to folks with the parking problem, but we have to just make sure, just take a tad more time, and trust me when I'm saying, I'm very sensitive. This is, just allows the opportunity for understanding and discussions going forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may--
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned that we're missing the vote here. Mr. Nygaard, as I understand it, has introduced at least a new ordinance and a resolution that goes along with it.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding that our discussion just a few minutes ago was that we were going to have an opportunity to hear the public's view on those two items. And it would seem to me that if that's, if we're going to defer action on the issue for 30 days, that we probably could have a public hearing on these items two weeks from now, and then we could have an idea of what the public thinks about it--
Yeah.
--and vote on it in 30 days.
And that's the intent.
That's not what he said.
I left that part off, I'm sorry.
Barbara stated it.
Yeah, Barbara stated it, that, you know, we have that public discussion in two weeks, and then, you know, then--
So that will be on the agenda in two weeks as a public hearing.
Correct.
It will just be a public hearing--
And a brief, maybe a briefing.
--on the ordinance proposals.
Yep.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Nygaard?
Yes, it is. My intent is to include my ordinance in the resolution for the 19th.
Okay, John.
Here's my concern, and I didn't vote for the Cavalier proposals, many people know, and for lots of good reasons, but I remember all the people that came down here from the RAC and all the other places that said, "Impose the neighborhood, this particular problem," and they're all for it. But I believe we promised them that night, the people who voted for it said, "Hey," and they're right, "Come down here and we'll fix it." I don't know why we're-- why-- why we-- I don't understand why we are delegating an obligation and commitment, me wave, which you can watch on video. We didn't say, "Subject to the RAC's indication, subject to some other group." We said, "The 11 of the people that said that, that we took on the moral obligation to fix it." Now there's a problem, and we're not fixing it, and it's a year later, we're now saying we're delegating this to-- because there's a process. Well, there was a process to put in place that Cavalier, too, and the consequences is what they're dealing with. I think the 11 of us should be dealing with this issue, because then we're going to vote. If they work up on something that doesn't really alleviate the neighborhood, we've taken a lot of people's time. There isn't, there aren't any new facts, and I don't care if we set a new pilot precedent, because we set a precedent when we voted, "Put the Cavalier in their backyard and impose that on their neighborhood." So--
Mr. Moss.
If you let me finish, please. I have the floor, thank you. Oh, I don't have any questions for you.
May I sit down?
But the point being is, a lot of times, you know, I always learn, eating a sandwich over and over, it doesn't taste better every time you eat it. And so the bottom line is, we know what this issue is, and we're the body that has to decide it, and it isn't going to make anyone totally happy, no matter what we do, so why don't we just get together and decide what we're willing to do? And that is a, I understand the citywide construction thing, they, a pilot could be for six months, for a year, but they need immediate relief, not relief in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. That's my only point.
Mr. Moss, may I respond?
Mr. Nygaard.
The proposal is to basically unravel the RPP, which has worked for many neighborhoods. My intent is to look forward to other projects that are going to affect other neighborhoods. Are we gonna, I'm suggesting we look ahead. We're going to have a problem when the Dome site comes with parking. There are other projects coming down the pike that can affect other neighborhoods. We shouldn't carve out one neighborhood for special treatment. Let's have an ordinance that addresses everybody in the city. We can all live under it, and if there's a neighborhood that needs help, they can ask for this type of resolution.
My point, a pilot offers immediate relief while we look for the more comprehensive solution, because we're going to have to go out to every single district, not just a resort area. It's the whole city. You could make it a, to end of September, so at least--
No, 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 no.
The pilot is a pilot, but this is a stall and delay in my--
It's not a stall and delay. We are looking ahead, what's going to happen in the Dome, and we're going to have, we're going to have problems having to unravel the entire RPP for the whole beach. That's the problem I see. There's widespread concern about unraveling that program. It seems to be working in some neighborhoods. We're going to have future construction problems.
We'll just agree to disagree.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, unfortunately, the folks out here haven't had a chance to look at this, but I think it does exactly what you want.
Yes, it does.
And I think to be able to deal with other neighborhoods that we know are coming, because these folks said, "Okay, when we do the Dome, they're going to have the same issues." And so I really think to give comfort to the folks who have come down here, this accomplishes exactly what the other one does, but it does it in a fashion that I think addresses the concerns that everybody has. So I really see this as a win-win.
Thank you.
And I hope we can have a chance to look at it.
Thank you.
It does not address the employee parking, and it doesn't address the resident parking in our neighborhoods from Cavalier.
No, I'm sorry, this does. This will address both of those.
If it's okay at this point, could we-- okay, call for the question. Okay. All right, call for the question.
I'm sorry, we've only had a, we only had a motion. I haven't heard a second.
Okay, did we have a motion in a second?
You did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There was a second, the motion is to defer.
Okay. Vote is open.
By a vote of seven to three, you've deferred this item until March the 5th with a public hearing on February 19th.
That is correct. And we're going to do our best to craft a win-win, and I am, like I said, with the Cavalier folks, we're going to be working to get this resolved. Thank you very much.
I refuse to delegate my thoughts.
Okay. All right, we have one more item. Okay, any speakers? I'm going to have perhaps one speaker. Any other speakers on 7F?
I have no speakers, just the recommendation.
Okay, at this point, I would like to welcome Pastor Ray Forkman from the Beach Fellowship Church and Virginia Beach Now to come forward, please. Thank you and welcome. And we just wanted to acknowledge you for your years of fundraising and great support and work that you, along with Andy Friedman, have done for the Housing Resource Center, and that we will be appropriating a donation of $25,000 from VB Now for that purpose. This is a great example of our community working together and Virginia Beach's commitment to, you know, to alleviating and making homeless a thing of the past. Any comments, please?
I'd love to speak tonight, but I'm--
Uh-oh.
That's a terrible thing to happen to a pastor.
It just came on today. I was able to do it, son. But I asked Andy--
Oh, yeah, Andy, will you pinch hit over here, please?
Yeah, I'm just, Ray asked me to just recognize the members of the Board of VB Home Now who are part of the effort to raise the funds, and he's saying that with expected donations, they're up to $840,000. So the board members are Deborah Basden, Bobby Jones, Georgia McDonald, Wayne Sawyer, Dee Oliver, Barbara Creach, Mary Harrison, Linwood Branch, Joshua Coe, John Oliveri, Teddy Salter, and of course, Ray, who's the chairman.
Okay.